Ready?
Yeah.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. If anybody's recording for Sonia's
Benefit.
Benefit, yeah. Richard Swenson, Mike Baptiste, Michael King, Ken, what's his name? Buckland and myself. Roll call, master plan review. Okay. I'll turn it over to Richard so he can.
All right.
Run with the ball.
All right, here we go. So, the agenda tonight is, and we're gonna go as far as we can. Ken, you have an agenda item you need to talk to on executive session. How long do you think that'll be?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, so we'll leave plenty of time. I don't wanna drag this out. And we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday if we need it. So, we're gonna talk about the purpose of the review, the history of the current master plan, the contents of the master plan, the mission statements, the vision statements on land use, and then a goals review. That's what I thought that we would do tonight. Anyone wants to do anything else, please feel free. I'm just trying to keep it organized. And then, at the end of this, I wanna talk about the update process proposal that I have shared with you before. So, the purpose on this, from my perspective, is to get the master plan approved, to have an approved version of it, so we can use it and refer to it and update it and change it. It's been in draft versions for a long time. So, the process that I see us going through is a review of the current plan, make edits, update changes as necessary, and approve it. And then do the same on the update procedure. Now, this is gonna be, this is gonna be interesting because the Board of Selectmen right now are also going through their own review cycle on the master plan. So, just keep that in the back of your mind for now, and we'll come back to it. Let's look at the history of the current plan. This is the one that everyone has, the one that's online now. It's titled as final, but it's not approved. It was created in conjunction with Ken's office and the SERPAD group. It referenced a lot of existing documents that we already have. And if I can, on these slides that you all have, on the top right corner is a reference to the document itself, where this is at. So, if you go to page six, you'll see all this stuff in there. And I've got a whole, most of the slides have a reference to the document. So, you can see all the documents that were used to help create this version. On June of 2017, there was a discovery workshop involving the public, about twenty people attended. There was an online public participation via social media and a online survey, probably Survey Monkey or something like that. There was a master plan public open house, another twenty people attended, and that was in September 2017. And then Ken shared this document with all the Wareham agencies back then. And the final version was published on April of 2018. That's almost a year and a half ago. This brings us to an interesting point in time where, with the Board of Selectmen deciding that they wanna go review it again, we're kinda starting the whole process all, where they, from their perspective, they're starting it all over again. In a perfect world, we would've got it approved and final back in April last year. And if they wanted to make changes now, they'd be making changes to the existing document, and we'd have a 2019 version or a 2020 version. But having done all this review and never approved it, from the Board of Selectmen's point of view, they wanna start the review process over again. And we're doing a review process too. So, we kinda are starting over again. But I think this time, from a planning board perspective, we're doing it from an ownership perspective as opposed to an observation or participation perspective. So, let's look at the contents. And this is right straight from here, the introduction, the background, the mission statements. And this is a key part, the future land use vision statement. The master plan really focuses a lot on land use. It says, if you just look at your whole town and you come up with a strategy for how you're gonna use the land, you're gonna generate a pretty good master plan. So, they spend significant time talking about land use. And once they get through that, then they go into the goals. These are the eight goals that are listed in the Master General Laws that those laws say must be in a master plan. Land use, economic development, service and facility stewardship and service, transportation, circulation, housing, open space, and natural and cultural resources. And you're gonna see that list of eight several times. But these are called out in the Master General Laws, chapter forty-one, as what will be in a master plan. Also included in there is an economic development plan as a separate entity. So, when you look at the mission statements, I summarize them. These are what the master plan calls out as a mission statement. That the residents, businesses, and institutions work together, we maximize stewardship and service, to approve the town's appearance, protect its resources, and to build on its character. Amend the government regulation process. Develop more traditional economic development in planned locations that complement the town's character. Address our housing needs using a wide variety of strategies. I thought that was interesting. And create specialized plans and encourage active program participation to accomplish these goals. And finally, create and improve a master plan that's concise, clear, and easy to understand. So, very, very, very high-level mission statements. These are the things that this master plan wants to do. And then they get into land use, vision statements. And they break it into three categories, open spaces, neighborhoods and villages, and business and commerce. This is the future land use vision map. Ken, you can help me here, but I was asking Ken where this data came from, because if you look here, permanently protected open space, for example. My house is in that dark green area.
We're trying to tell you something.
So, I don't think that's right, but I think.
Well, you know, well, here's how this works. This is a broad brush plan. There are pockets of land ownership in there within those big blobs of land use types that don't fit.
There are exceptions.
There are exceptions to that list. But overall, the idea is you try to get functional areas within the town as a map that can help you, guide you as to where you think the effort should be. So, in a case like this map here, you would not, in the future, try to put industrial land in the eastern part of the town. You'd be concentrating in that area in the west side of town.
So, yeah, if you look at the greens, if you will, water resources and habitats, agricultural and permanently protected, you see almost all of this up here is green. Up here, down here in West Wareham. Then in the housing, there's low density, medium density, and traditional town centers. That's the yellows and the oranges. You can see how that, and then the business parks and the business parks and office park and commercial strip, you can see. And that's all pretty, what's the word I wanna use? Defined, localized, I guess, is the word I wanna say right now. We have our business parks up in here. We have our traditional downtown centers here in Wareham and over here on onset. Have our commercial strip on Cranberry Highway and over in West Wareham, and then our business parks over there as well.
So, this does not reflect the zoning map. It's just a vision.
It's a vision, land use map, but it is pretty accurate, isn't it, Ken?
Well, yeah, I mean, because the fact is, what we wanna do is probably preserve a lot of what we have already. So, there's not a lot of changes. But what, the important thing about a future land use map is where you make changes, where you try to define, so, because in the case of the commercial strip centers, the red area to the.
Sorry.
To the left, where Wareham Crossing is located and the Walmart and Toby Road, that whole area. That's zone industrial at this point right now. And instead of going to an industrial use, this suggests that we try to support and maintain the commercial center that's there.
I get it, yeah.
And similarly, with other areas, one of the important things about neighborhoods is there usually is a need to try to preserve the character of the neighborhood, to preserve the value, the land value and the housing values that people have invested in. So, those areas are probably pretty well-defined as to what, but there's gonna be some inclusions, like I said, of other uses that are there. And it isn't necessarily hard and fast as boundary lines.
So, there's an interactive land use map. It's here at this website. I kinda struggled with it. I don't know if you've ever tried to use it.
Yeah, and what it does is it pops up the description of these land use types on that website.
So, moving on, as I said, there's three major categories they talk to, open spaces being the first, and they talk about permanently protected, areas that are already permanently protected, and that's, again, if you look at the land use map, it's a dark green. Parks, farms, and forests, suggested that it stays protected. And the master plan vision goal, and I renamed these vision goals, I called these vision goals so they don't get confused with the other goals later on, to, this master plan calls for future conservation efforts to expand these protected areas and create a linked network of them. Sounds like something for the land trust to me.
Well, most of this is already in effect.
Yeah.
We've preserved a lot of land through the land trust and community preservation. And prior to that, you had some other, you had some independent conservation restrictions put on. And they are, like the Louisiana Corridor is a big one.
It's my impression, George, that this town's doing a lot on.
I think we're well ahead of what anybody else is doing.
Is that, is that the general consensus of people in this room? I think the land trust does a great job.
That and using community preservation funding has worked out well.
So, what they go on to say is that the master plan should call for open space plans and identify specific parcels to continue this. On water resources and habitats, that's the natural resources essential to the future, generally undeveloped. And again, it's about focus on future land preservation efforts. And again, identifying parcels for acquisition, donation, improve the value of their contribution. Most of the words that you see up here are right, are cut and paste right from this document. I'm not making anything up. On the agricultural side, they're mainly talking about bogs. Maintain these areas and support the cranberry product space. And support it and allow it as opposed to restricting it.
I don't know if signing on to this Right to Farm Act would have any effect on the town or not. I know that some of our neighbors have done it.
Rochester's very proud of it. Middle World too.
Yes, I don't know what the benefit is to doing that, but.
Is that, is there a mention of right to farm in here? Seems to me there may be.
I don't recall if it says right to farm. There is already state law that protects the right to farm.
All right, so, the second category on vision, land use vision, is neighborhoods and villages. It's low-density homes, medium, and villages. So, on the low-density side, they talk, it's rural character, and unchecked development can impact the resources and increase our costs. The goal should be to maintain and support those existing neighborhoods and preserve the character. Medium density, they talk about Swiss Beach, Cranberry, Shangri-La, Cranberry Grove, sorry. And this helps meet some of the housing goals with smaller houses and little higher densities. These are the older areas and oftentimes require reinvestment. But the goal should be to support the neighborhoods as unique areas and encourage reinvestment through redevelopment and improvement. Now, the town centers, they're talking to onset, Wareham Center and West Wareham, broad mix of uses. General infrastructure amenities are there, which are less common everywhere else. I always think of sidewalks when I think about that, they're the only places that have it. But they are very, very unique and do generate the character aspects of Wareham.
When they talk about supporting different, both in this and the previous ones, support in what manner?
That could be in zoning, could be in infrastructure investment, it could be in programs like a facade improvement plan.
My interpretation was, don't do anything to change it. That, well, that's how, that's just my interpretation of what support means, you know? This is what it is. Make sure you don't do anything to take it away, but continue it on through investment and things like you talked about. So, this master plan implication calls for a high level of investment to maintain those village centers, onset, Wareham, and West Wareham. So, at this point, as we do this review, these are all parts of this master plan. We need to be deciding and making sure that we're comfortable with these statements. You know, so far, I'm comfortable with all of this. I think this is all fine. It's all a very good vision for where we are and where we wanna go, and it calls out things that we can do to get there. But if there's people that have an issue with it, we need to stop and talk about it. That's what we're trying to do here. So, here's some interesting stuff on business and commerce. Commercial strips provide retail and service, jobs and tax revenue, provide traffic congestion and environmental impact. Future commercial land uses should limit negative impacts. That's a nice statement. Support and advance new forms of consumer commerce. Encourage appropriately designed, high-value development of the commercial centers with the coordinated infrastructure investment, land use regulations, and marketing, which are all required to do this. The business parks provide high-quality, high-wage jobs and tax revenue, should be designed and improved in order to minimize visual and environmental impact. Investment in the business parks can be seen as public benefit without high demand on services. And I assume that what they're referring to there is municipal services, Ken? Is that how you take that?
That's correct, yeah.
So, this is, this is a good one here. Master plan vision goal, support further investment in the business parks. Bold statement. It's something that I don't know that we're actively pursuing right now. But this calls out for investment strategies on a part of the town in terms of tax credits, road utility improvements, expedited permitting options to make this happen. This master plan thinks that business parks are a very advantageous thing, as I read it. And I agree with it. I agree with it a hundred percent. But I don't know that we're.
Well, there was a expedition into expedited permitting a few years back regarding a business park that was proposed. And I, personally, I didn't see the need for it. I realized that it would open up some venues where they could get help with infrastructure. But expedited permitting treats them a lot like a fuddy-bee is treated, takes it out of the land use boards. And much of the problems recently is because projects have not gone through the land use boards.
We don't have an expedited process, do we, Ken?
No. Yes, we do. We have a forty-three D, then we did it all. And it applied, well, the problem was, we were trying to find land that would be used for the purpose of the forty-three D.
Forty-three D as a dog?
That's correct. Expedited permitting. We found two parcels. One is a town-owned one, the Tremont Ale Factory, and the other is the last parcel in the Rosebrook commercial center. And it's not just expedited permitting, which really says that you have to do the usual permitting, but do it in a faster timeframe. You have to get it done by six months.
As opposed to unlimited?
The land use boards, they have to get the permitting done in six months.
And if not?
Then it's granted as a right.
Well, that kind of puts us in an uncomfortable position.
Well, when this came up the first time.
Well, it also, wait, there's one more thing. It also, the parcels that are identified in the forty-three D get put onto a state website, marketing industrial properties or commercial properties for a broader audience.
This, the forty-three D is only for industrial properties?
No, it's for commercial, industrial.
Sorry. Non-residential.
Right. Well, it could be mixed use.
And how how is the decision made to use the expedited process? Is that, does a board or an authority in our town say, on this piece of property, we're going to use the forty-three D process and decide to do that? Or does an applicant apply for permitting using this process?
What it likely, the reason why we set this up for the two parcels of land was to get it in place in the town regulations, so that what we could do is maybe expand it beyond, so that if somebody came in and said, I can put in a hundred million dollar value project, and it's gonna have zero impact on the town, and all you have to do is get the permitting done in six months, can I get the forty-three D? You can say, yes, we can expand it to include your parcel of land.
Okay.
What do you mean?
The town.
Through town meeting action, how's that happen? Who makes that call?
Town meeting.
Okay, business and office parks. And here, it was, if you go to page sixteen, it was hard, and I, to try to outline this, so I just said, an example is the Rosebrook Business Park in the Business Development Overlay District, which was called out as high-value, low-impact development and designed to complement the surrounding areas and provides a lot of benefits to Wareham. We talk about Rosebrook, I mean, they've got shopping, they got all these things in one spot, you know, nursing home and the medical center and the hotel and shopping and restaurants all right there. So, this plan says, continue to encourage this type of investment. We should identify, again, incentives on our part to attract developers to come and do this stuff.
Well, we currently, we created the Business Overlay District, number one, and we have given tax credits to some of the businesses there. Why is the town taking the lead on that, so to speak, and not the owner? Or is this a joint effort? How is this encouragement?
I, I'll give you my cut at it, is that if we want some developers to come in and renovate the bakery building over on Cranberry Highway on the way into West Wareham, and that other building next to it, what, you help me here.
Bakery, oh, lunch.
Pharmacy and a bakery.
Oh, all right. If we want, a developer right now looks at that property and they want nothing to do with it. But if the town said, if you do come in and take it and do something with it, we will give you tax incentives to do that, we will give you pilot tax programs to do that, we'll give you incentives to make your business plan work, that's the town taking the lead. That's how I look at it.
Well, you use that as an example. I mean, the reason that pharmacy property hasn't gone anywhere is because of the owner. You know, he hasn't sold it. He's had opportunity, but.
I don't know.
How do you sidestep that, other than?
And aren't we subsidizing?
I'll say again.
Aren't we subsidizing the sale process for a private citizen?
Sure, absolutely.
If it has a public purpose. We can't just do it just for the purpose of advancing the business.
Oh, it has to be a well-thought-out.
It has to have jobs and taxes.
I'm trying to figure out how to get that ISO out of there. And if I, and to me, if I defer taxes for one year on it, that's an easy price to pay to get those properties cleaned up and functional again. That's how I look at it.
But the people that own it, they're investors, they're not developers. They couldn't care less.
See, I struggle with that because they're not owning it because they like to look at it.
Well, they figure sooner or later, it's gonna be worth a lot of money, bottom line, a dollar bill. They couldn't give a shit what goes in there.
How's that working out for them so far?
Well, not too good.
There you go.
But they're patient, they're patient.
They must be. I can't believe how patient they are.
That's one of those guys, I mean, one of them, the more recent owner, he's just, well, it's kinda like Graham Lumber, he came in, started doing some work, and got cease and desist a lot of it.
The thing is, he bought, there was four properties involved in this acquisition. What he wanted to do down there, yeah, he got slapped in the hands, he said, the hell with it, he'll walk away from it. He's making plenty of money on the other properties he bought in that package, so he couldn't care less.
But the pharmacy program, I mean, yeah, longevity will catch up and it'll get sold.
I'm with, I'm with you to a certain degree, Mike. I get a bad taste in my mouth when I start thinking about incentives, if you will, to private developers to get them to come in. But what I've been learning in the last year and a half is that that might be the only way to get it done.
Well, let's go back in time a little bit, EDAC, when that was generated, where industrial property phase one went in there, that was town land. And the idea was to have an incubator for companies coming in, tax incentives, this and that. I think within ten years, all that land is all privately owned. So, a company come in on the incentive as an incubator company, stated five years, when you made your profit, you rolled it off and went someplace else or dumped it. Five is a good example.
You lost me. I thought you said that it became privately owned.
Well, it did. It was a company, there was a firm called McCarthy and Burke.
Oh, sure.
Owned ninety percent of it, and of course, Burke is gone, so now it's McCarthy.
But it was town-owned property before.
Yeah.
So, the town sold it to them.
Well, EDAC was in that process, giving it away.
Giving it away.
They created the subdivision, they created the. And there were tax incentives, like.
Sure.
Like Weelock had a ten-year tax break and nine and a half years. and nine and a half years later, they backed up, went to South America.
Fiberspa.
But that building is still there and it's still in use.
Sounds like Tremont Ale.
Now, Tremont Ale was a whole other story.
Okay, we won't go there.
You know, Fiberspa came in the town, same thing, on their, on their incubator. You know, everybody thinks of Fiberspa, they think of it as, you know, windsurfing masks. His main thing was making masks for the government, government contract. MIT grant, you've got an unlimited source of avenues to develop your skills with government grants, and that's what he did. The windsurfing thing was just a hobby his, because he enjoyed doing it. He had a good product, like I said, we paid for the development of the product. He made millions. Next thing was Foolable Products, which was underground, the linings for the oil industry. Soon it got developed, it all got sold, and it's all packaged up and gone. And McCarthy, what, looks for another tenant to rent the building.
But yes, our industrial park has been a great incubator.
Yeah. You know, I looked at it going many years ago, you know, to do some, some work. And like I said, it was a lot of good benefits. You know, as long as you've got a good company to back you up there, you're going to have revenue for X amount of years. And everything, everybody looks at their five-year window. You know, when the five year's gone, hey, you know, you either made it or you're gone someplace else.
So if we do this again, we've got a lot of lessons learned in our pocket, right?
Well, hard lessons, the thing is, what do we have for property left that the town has to market?
We'll see, yeah, I, I agree. But keep in mind, I just want to point this out, the town should identify programs such as, these are vision statements, these are suggestions, these are things to think about. These are, there's other statements when we get into the goals that are hard in line, "Do this." And I have, and sometimes I think they should be softer stated, but we'll get there. So, we've gotten through the introduction, and we've gotten through the land use and the land use vision goals. The next section is, is eight categories with twenty goals and fifty-seven sub-strategies. Can I assume at this point that this board is okay with where we are so far?
The only thing that I saw that might, for one reason, I don't know if you'd call it lacking or not, all of your goals were based on large, high-value projects.
Keep going.
I think we're leaving out the small business, the incubators. You know, one thing we've tried to do and never really accomplished is create a place for tradesmen, landscapers, small business to buffer between the higher use and residential. That's... There's a lot of small business in my head, and a lot of it gets ignored.
I don't think there's any specific mention in this document to small business. You can? I can't think of any, I mean, I'm just re...
Not that I can recall.
I can't recall any either, that's, that's a good point. Maybe we should, maybe we should think about adding a...
Well, you take the industrial park, the incubator. You're in a unit, a rental unit in the industrial park, and you outgrow it, where do you go from there? You'd have to go out of town, find someplace else, out of the country. You know, Chatham Village is a good example.
I'm sorry, I don't know where that is.
That's the smell of garlic you get every once in a while in the industrial park.
Okay.
They started out in two, one or two units in the industri, in the McCarthy building many years ago, started out making root-ons. They moved into the building at the end of the, what's that, Kendrick?
Yeah, yeah.
And then they gradually took over that entire building. And now they've gone into another building across the way. You know, a success story, they hire, you know, they have hundreds of people. But how many times, where can we do that again? Where can we encourage that or?
That growth, or the ability to grow?
Right now, like, you guys started out in one of the McCarthy units, right? You and Michael. And there was no place to go from there.
No, whatever you call it, we ended up buying the building, it was its back. We needed someplace to move to, something bigger.
So what I'm hearing is, is that we should probably, let's, I tell you what, let's just...
Yeah, just file that, just...
Yeah, but we're going to get to the, to one, like, you know, as we peel this onion back now and go down into these map, these goals per se.
It does talk about business incubation, though.
It does?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
Page eight.
On page what?
Eight.
Oh, God. Promote job training and business incubation, and that's a call from the 2016 Community Development Strategy. And I don't know that it carried over. Anyway, small business focus, incubation. I think that's a really good point, George, and I think it's something that, I think as we go through this, we'll find a place that we might want to add a, a sub-goal and talk specifically to that. Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, master plan goals, again, these are the eight categories called out by Master General Law. Of those eight categories, there's twenty total goals identified. And within those twenty goals, there are fifty-seven total strategies, five of them are duplicates. It just says, "See the goal in this other section because they're the same," so it's fifty-two unique. And each strategy includes a description, a suggested responsible parties, and those are you, you'd be surprised, the Wareham Planning Board is clearly the winner on responsible parties. And, well, we win, we win hands down.
They're responsible for everything.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. And you never knew that, did you? And then performance measures. Now, I did not get into the suggested responsible parties or performance measures. I just got into the description. And here is where I think we need to look very carefully, can we, as a team, support these goals? There's twenty, there's twenty of them, they're being yellow. And here's the first one, is focused redevelopment improvements to Wareham Village and Onset Village. This is under land use. Land use has like seven or eight total, it's got the most. And underneath this goal, there's going to be seven, we're going to see them here. Invest community development block grant, CDBG resources into that infrastructure that improves the appearance and leads to private investment. And we do do that, we do that now. I mean, I know the redevelopment authority is always looking at the CDBG money and what we can get and how we can apply it to the villages. So there's a vacant and underutilized property survey that was done in 2018 to, it suggests that we implement the recommendations in there to get, to improve the maintenance and appearance of ISOAR. And I, I know we're doing that now actively, looking at ways to deal with this. And number three, so, and there's more. Explore how we can legally go after ISOAR properties. Comments or questions there? Anyone have any heartburn about any of those?
Yeah, the benches in town.
I'm sorry?
You know, you talked, you made a comment about, you know, putting something back into the town, making the town more appealing and this and that. Old people, you know, Wayans is a pretty nice place to walk around, you've got the vistas in the back, you've got a swan in the fall. Where do they sit now? All the benches disappeared.
So...
You know, that's something they should do. You know, old people want to go for a walk, go get a bite to eat or whatever.
That's, that's a...
They disappeared for a reason.
Well, that, that would fall right in there, and that would be a great project for someone to take on, and it'd fall right underneath strategy one there, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but their benches, not my beds.
Well, let's, let's not dive down there. Alright. We're still on goal...
You know, one thing that people don't realize is, there used to be a lot of retail on Main Street, but it was consumed by the age of big banks. The banks bought up the retail space, knocked it down and made big banks. Now they don't want those big buildings anymore. They're a lot to take care of. I mean, that's where your retail space went on Main Street.
Are you talking to just two properties that I know, that I, that come to my mind? The TD Bank and Eastern Bank? Is that what you're talking about?
There used to have a movie theater there years ago. There was another drugstore there, hardware store.
It was five and ten, it was...
Bullinelli.
Bullinelli was down the other end, yeah. I mean, some of those things just not popular anymore, but, but...
It's hard not to look back, you know, and switch the focus to forward. It was hard to do.
But that's where all your retail space went. And I think there were some offices there too.
So strategy four talks about getting a fire station out of downtown, basically. Isn't that what they're saying here, Ken?
That's right.
And, and I'll just ask, and I don't understand why that's important. I, it doesn't...
For one, it's, it's actually in the flood plain. And it's not good to have an emergency headquarters in a, potentially in a hazard zone.
Yeah, they've got plenty of boats now.
I asked the fire captain how come they, they want to get out of, how come they need to get out of there? And they said, "They just want a bigger building."
Yeah, probably do.
So...
They've been talking there for forty years.
But is that a valid goal to have?
Yeah, but I mean, we don't have any immediate plans to relocate.
But is it a good goal? I mean, we leave it in the plan? I think we do.
Yeah.
Tremont Ale, we behind that?
Glad to see something's happening down there. I don't know if I'm crazy about them.
At least it's something, George.
That's it. The town would sit there and let it collapse on itself the way we're going, so...
So utilize the reinvestment toolbox, public-private partnerships, district improvement, these are all the programs that we can, that we can look at. And I know, Ken, you look at them all the time, where we can get money to do stuff in the villages. So I think this is something that's ongoing all the time and getting executed. And water-dependent activities and development, I think the Onset Bath House is a good example of that. And the Whitschs Island work that's going on is a good example.
And a major failure in makeup property.
For as long, a short time I've been here, I look at it as, as, it's, it's better than it was when I got here.
No, because you tore down reusable buildings that will never be rebuilt now.
Oh, they weren't here when I came.
Yeah, they were.
Were they?
The old Greylumber property, there were buildings there that could be repurposed.
Are you, are you talking over at the Narrows?
Yeah.
And that building just came down, didn't it?
Yeah. And what's going to go there now? It's just going to revert back to riverfront. What good does that do the town?
Well, I don't, I don't know that that's what it is, what's going to happen there. I've heard, I've heard discussion and been part of discussion on all kinds of ideas over there.
There's been ideas over there for a long time, but not by the people that can control it.
Well...
Every time they've done something, they've been slapped in the face. What's their incentive to come to a end?
Yeah, but, you know, you can't look at it that way. You got to, sure, things haven't gone right in the past, but I'm, I'm looking at it going forward. I mean, I think there's opportunities, and I'm going to work to try to make them happen. And maybe I'll get slapped down too, but...
I, I hope you're successful, because it's a shame to see it looking the way it is.
So, seven strategies under improvements to the villages. I think they're all good, I think we should all leave them right in there. Land use goal number two. You'll notice that land use, well, there's, there's a whole section on land use vision that we just went through. The land use goal is the number one thing listed in the state laws, and it's the, it's the section of this master plan that has the most, most work done. So promote new industrial and office park development at the interchange of I-95 and 28. And here in this instance, I got here too. So here they refer to the economic development element, so this is one of the duplicated goals, so we'll get to this one later. Implement the future land use map that we just went through. Protect our habitats, water resource and agricultural areas. And again, they refer to the open space and recreational element and the natural and cultural resources element for some detailed strategies. Improve Wareham's existing transfer of development rights by law. And I'll be very honest with you, I don't know what that means. Anyone here know what it means?
Yes.
Go, I'm so glad you're here.
Transfer of development rights takes the, takes two parcels of land. And says, "The development on one is transferred over to the second." So that the first becomes permanently protected open space, and the second becomes more intensely developed land.
Can you give me an example? How that might be done?
Or why you would do it?
Okay.
Because it's extremely difficult to do, because of market forces, the cost of land. But the way it's done is, think of the idea is, if you had an intensely developed area, potential developed area by zoning within a water resource district. So it could potentially affect the water quality. You transfer the development or those development rights, say the eighty, a hundred houses that could be developed in that piece of land, and move them to an area where it's more intensely developed, where you could have that kind of development.
Without impacting the water, water resources.
And the land that's left in the water resource area then is permanently protected as open space.
But what's the purpose of the shifting it over? Do you have to relax zoning in that?
You increase density of the donor, we selected donor parcels.
Yeah.
For instance, Tyonet Village was a donor parcel. The Cranberry, Ocean Spray Cranberry Site in East Wareham was a parcel. You could take the development rights of, I think at the time, say ADM had, what? Thousand households?
Yeah, twelve, some was running, it was quite a bit.
They had the possibility of developing a thousand, for a number, residential properties on their site.
It was already zoned to do that?
That was as of right. It would require them to cut in all these roads and infrastructure and water and power. What they could do is place a conservation restriction and take those development rights and move it to a donor parcel. Kind of like cluster development, but on a little different scale.
But when they moved it, did they move it to, did they have to move it to a parcel that was already zoned for it?
No, it had to go to a, a piece that the town had designated as a donor parcel.
Ah, I see.
I mean, a receiving parcel.
I see.
Sorry.
So why does this call out improving our bylaw?
What they were looking to do there was to create a bank. So instead of always having a donor parcel and a receiving parcel, maybe you only have a donor parcel. You're sitting in the water resource area, you have a donor parcel. You can get value from that with the bank by transferring those development rights to the bank.
And then the bank could take and work with someone who has a receiving parcel.
Correct. So there didn't have to be a direct connection between both, it could be this intermediary.
So this strategy just calls out for a review and possible change to the existing bylaw, right?
One of the, one of the faults in the existing one, it depends on how you look at it, was, it was one-to-one. You took a, a unit here, and you've got a union over there. Large landowner wanted one unit here for three over here, which was one-sided.
That's where the bank kind of came in, right, as an arbitrator type of thing?
The bank was somewhere where I've got six lots... The bank was somewhere where, I've got six lots over here, I'm not gonna develop. We're gonna hold them over here till we have a place to put them. It's not a...
And, and another thing was, the amount of large parcel landowners was pretty small. So in other words, you know, say three or four of us had five acres combined together, we could make that a target parcel. So now the bank could come and do some negotiation. The way it was written before was, yeah, it was one-to-one. And the thing is, all the property was controlled by just a few individuals.
Ken, is this, would this be a high priority thing in your mind?
No. I've done transfer development rights since 1986. And they're, they're very hard to do and they're only in unique conditions. Do they make any sense?
Do you consider, is it one that we should keep in here anyway? As a, as a long-term goal? To improve that bylaw?
Personally, I don't have that one opinion one way or another. It's not something I'm gonna be doing. And I don't, I don't suggest putting the resources towards improving it at this point.
I would have to agree.
Should we take it out?
I, I don't think take it out. I think put it way back on the list. So you're aware of it, say it's something you can work on, but I don't think it's a high priority.
I, I agree. One of the, one of the things in my grand plan is that, is that once we get a master plan, that then the, and we have a list of things to do, then the first thing we do is prioritize. Because I've, you've heard me say it before, there's fifty-two things here, and if I could get five...
What it does, it overwhelms people right off the bat.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh shit, we can't do that.
So if we can, we'll get to the prioritization and just focus on some, what I like to call low-hanging fruit. Get some big wins right off the top and get people excited about it. I wish Emmanuel was here for this one.
Well, we know what he would do.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is a good one. Create design guidelines for commercial development in certain areas. I mean, that, design guidelines are, is a high-level statement. Certain areas makes it even more vague. But if we could get sponsors for this and people in our government to get together and come up with these guidelines and a way to use them and a way to apply them and implement them, then this might, I mean, Emmanuel could be the champion on this and drive this through. Minimize the environmental and visual impacts of solar farms by implementing the town's recent solar bylaw. Did that ever get implemented? Did you know of, Ken, that solar bylaw?
And this was a strange section. I suggested taking this out because the solar bylaw was passed by town meeting at the same time we were going through this draft of the planning board of the master plan, excuse me.
Now, hasn't a large portion of a proposed business park been displaced by solar fields?
Well, it's about to be completely cut. The second half of it's coming in.
Yeah, it is, is an example of, yeah, it would be nice to see high-tech, high-paying jobs coming to town, but there isn't any.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
Two and five between. Well, well, you're referring to, the solar farm here was designated as a high-tech industrial park.
No, what I'm getting at is this, is this talks about implementing the town's recent solar bylaw. And I, I don't even know if it...
I don't know what that means actually. We have to implement...
It's a bylaw, so...
It's already done. So that law has, this has been checkmark, done, right?
Right.
So it should be taken out. So...
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an action here to work with the editor on this to remove land use goal number three, strategy number four. Okay?
Although minimize visual and environmental impacts is probably a good...
That's, that's still an important thing.
Yeah, that's probably the...
I think about that every time I go down past Walmont.
So, you wanna reword it? Because, because what I hear you saying, Michael, is we should change it to minimize visual and environmental impacts of solar farms by implementing more stringent town bylaws.
I think we already tried that. Didn't we try, trying to increase the buffer?
Well, the, the solar farm you're talking about down on Toby Road was not done under the solar, the new solar bylaw. It was a public utility.
And is there a mechanism in place to stop something like that from happening going forward? Because that place, that, that solar farm is a nice one. I mean, that's, that's a crying shame.
Here we go again. That's another area that was designated as...
That was industrial?
Yeah. Increase the tax base, you know? And who owns the land, it's whatever the market bear. You know, you talk about solar, and let's get a little off the track a little bit. The next wave in solar is gonna be on the agricultural fields. It's coming. We're working on it now. And the thing is, the agricultural business is in the, in the harpers, as they say. And it's gonna change the reflection of that.
I would, I would think that there's still a strategy to minimize visual and environmental impacts of solar farms.
Yeah, I agree.
So minimize visual and environmental impacts of solar farms by considering new alternative regulations.
Well, you could just leave it at that, by our superior.
I'm sorry?
You could just minimize visual and environmental impacts of solar farms, period.
Right.
Okay.
That is, that is definitely becoming a larger problem.
And future green technology.
Okay, you got it.
And at the very least, if these things get jammed down the throat, the town should be benefiting more from them than we are.
Okay, economic development goal one, focusing on the interchange of I-95 and 28. Fully implement the Route 28 Economic Development Study of 2016. I've, I've gone through that. It's a, it's a pretty high-level document, has some good vision to it, but...
Wasn't it Empire Circuit?
Yes, it was.
I think it's a fine goal. And we should leave it in.
I'm, I'm told that the biggest stumbling block to this
Expedited.
Area is wastewater treatment.
Isn't that what torpedoed the industrial park on 200, on Farm and Market Road?
Yeah, that whole, the whole B-Dot. I'm told that that's the biggest, that's the one thing that is blocking anything on the other side of 495-25. Is, let's see, permitting agency, state permitting agency.
EPA?
DEP.
No. You get, you get on the other side of 25?
The MEPA filing requires wastewater treatment, as far as I, far as I know, for anything of any size.
Wait, where, where are you talking about?
You're talking...
Look on page thirty.
Anything that says the B-Dot. The technology park that was approved off of Tyonet Road. The only thing that I'm told is, put that on hold or change the plans is wastewater treatment.
Well, obviously they've abandoned it, they cover it with solar panels.
Yeah.
This strategy says expand the 43D program. And I don't understand what that means.
Expand it to where?
Well, I, I, expand the law, expand what? What is it?
Promoting?
I don't know.
Promoting expedited permitting throughout the town.
So can we change the word? I find expand very confusing. I'd like promote better.
I think promote would be a better term.
If, I'm not sure I agree with the goal, but, but now I understand it better. So we're gonna, I think we should do that, so let's change.
Wouldn't, wouldn't something like that, like Mike was saying, you know, you, you use this expedited permitting, you give them tax credits that come in to build a business in the middle of town? Would it make more sense to give them tax credits based on a longer stay? And the longer you're in town, the more people you employ, the better the incentive becomes to give them? The incentive to actually stay and build in town rather than blow town?
That's kind of what the, the tip would like with the Marriott. Who else used that over there?
The Maltsters.
Yeah, that, you know, while they were coming out of the ground and building and didn't have any occupancy, they had a lower impact and then it was offset by the room taxes and things that they received once they got the doors opened. You know, it was what, a five-year tip?
Yeah, five. The, the other thing that's being done, that's been done for quite a few years actually, is develop, development agreements where there's performance standards in the agreement.
Right. You, you get to benchmark X and you receive a little bonus or a little kicker in the tax.
Or we don't give you penalties.
Or you, yeah, or you lose the perk we gave you in the reduced tax, right? You can go both ways.
Yeah. Well, I would think you'd want to put a positive spin on it.
Sure.
You know, for the first five years, we're gonna reduce your tax liability by, you know, seventy-five percent to help you get up and running.
But...
But you have to be at this benchmark at the end of the five years in order to retain it or to retain it at fifty percent for another five years.
I kinda like, we're gonna check you at year two, three and four.
Whatever the number happens to be.
So we're gonna change the word expand to promote here. And say promote chapter 43D process.
You can skip the 43D and say promote expedited permitting.
Just say promote expedited permitting? Everyone okay with that?
Yeah. I'm not real comfortable with, with that because I haven't worked with it. If I work with expedited permitting and like the process, I'll support it a hundred percent. But it's okay to be there, it's a strategy, you know?
How, okay.
I would think it would work, it would only work if both bodies put effort into it. You know, it'd have to be from both sides of the table.
Well, the fact is, the, the planning board has and still has been doing for years, meeting the requirements of expedited permitting. Because almost all the projects you have have gone through within six months. But there's just been a couple of high, high-profile projects that have taken a little bit longer and gave the permitting process a bad name.
And what they don't realize is, the only reason they took longer is they weren't through the MEPA process. There was no, they weren't being delayed locally.
What's MEPA?
Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. It's the big, it's the overarching environmental impact statement process that the state has.
I get it.
Yeah, they like to say, like Wareham Crossing took three years to approve. Well, they weren't in front of us for three years. Whatever. Every time that came out, it was a longer time period. Same thing with Walmont. Every time it came out, the time got longer, you know?
So how about, can I, I would, rather than just say promote expedited permitting, can we add, we're practical to the end of that? Or we're feasible? It just shows three words don't sit well. Pardon me?
We're appropriate?
Yeah, we're, that works for me too.
Where would you put an industrial office park on I-195 and 28?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. There's, where's the land?
One of the things that the 2016 study found was that there is a number of pieces of land that were not fully developed. That there was, there was development potential within the parcels of land that are there.
Have to get creative. If, to, to your question, you know, if we felt that that was a top three, top five priority for this town to, to develop industrial space near that intersection, the first mission would be go out and find it. Right?
Does it, does it have to be at that intersection? What's on the other side of 25?
Land that suffers from wastewater treatment.
But to your point, that's it. We'd have to go find it. It doesn't have to be right there. It has to be someplace where, the whole goal is, is that there's gonna be industrial companies that wanna come in and have access to the interstate system there.
Yeah, of course.
Get their trucks in and out.
We, we were told, you know, back when the B-Dot was done.
Isn't it so-called a district?
Which is the area you're speaking of. They came up with the technology park, which we started permitting different sites. That when developed, it would, they would be looking for ramps to access the highways there. And they would also have a connector over to Shawford and its road. But because of environmental, you know, meaning wastewater concerns and having to meet, I don't know if it was nitrogen loading or...
Well, it interfered with the cranberry vogs too. They couldn't get enough open land to make passageways and all that to make it feasible.
Well, they, they had a plan.
Yeah, but the thing is, it wasn't feasible. That's the bottom line.
Why, why wasn't it feasible?
The cost. The cost just to put the infrastructure in, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't gonna work.
Town of Wareham's gotta come up with some incentive.
Well, how, how is the idea that's being floated for the racetrack on the other side of 25?
It's another pipe dream. Who knows where that comes from?
I mean, aren't they gonna suffer from the same issue?
You would think, especially when there are Onsets, Zone One or Zone Two.
They'd have their own package plan, oh, Zone Two. They'd have their own package treatment plan or have a connection, build a connection in.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a big issue up there. Sitting on that south end of that aquifer. There's Zone Two, right?
They have made package plants quite affordable on that scale. It's still not cheap, but, you know...
All right, so... What did you say? I said as practical. What was your words, Michael?
Is it appropriate?
Not appropriate.
All right, we, is that all right? We keep it with promote. We're gonna promote it as appropriate. Because I don't want people reading it and saying, oh geez, they're gonna go, they're gonna go cram permits through left and right everywhere they can. I think we gotta put a temper on it, anyway. That's the second change. Work in direct partnership with ADM to continue development in the, in the B-Dot.
Well, you must have scratched that. Because every time, whatever the market's gonna be, that's, that good parcel is that parcel on Shawford and its road. That thing has been redrawn, recut up, diced and changed the last ten years. And the thing is, whatever the market will be, last time they came before us, well, three times ago, they wanted to put a little, guy wanted to put a bunch of condos in there, remember that? Contractor condos? Wouldn't fit in there, cut that one away. They come back and they re-divided that land again. That imaginary road that's gone across into that parcel between the furniture place and Beaton's. There was two roads that supposed to access that solar farm. Half the time they come in and it's not there anymore. They're always changing their lanes all the time. They're just trying to package it to solid, basically. The market, you know, they don't, they don't have any concerns about the business park or whatever. Whatever the market will be, and that's what their concept is.
You think we should take this goal, this strategy out?
Yeah, I really do. The B-Dot, the concept of the B-Dot was great, but the B-Dot went down in flames a long time ago. And the thing is, every once in a while they bring it up. The B-Dot, the B-Dot. When the furniture place come, the people came here. They talked about all the stuff that was promised to promote the B-Dot, what they were gonna do for them. They didn't do nothing but pave that road and put more traffic on Shawford and its road.
The, the first push for expedited permitting was, was for that property. I think to help with infrastructure needs. Maybe that's how you attack it. We're looking for ways to incentivize... We're looking for ways to incentivize putting some roads in there and some, uh...
Towns, not go put any roads in there.
But you can incentivize them to do it. I'm not sure how the forty-three D works in that respect, isn't it opening up to grants and stuff?
Yeah, it does.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, we have master's grants that we look for. What happened to the, uh, what were the ball fields on that Charlotte Fitness Road? Remember they tried putting that up, forbid for elderly housing or whatever? And there was no takers on it, because there's nothing out there. You're going to put all these old people on the middle of the woods? They don't even have sidewalks, let my streetlights.
That wasn't, that wasn't for senior high school, that was a scam to build another forty-B.
What do you want to do with this?
We want, I think, to, uh, develop the land in some way that's appropriate for...
Take out the reference to AD make piece?
I was just going to say, remove the reference to make piece.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's, there's a lot of land that could be developed as an industrial park, you're looking to expand industrial parks. Find, find a way to make it happen.
I said, the, the, the town is, is perfectly positioned for that type of industry. I mean, you can't ask for a better location for, for somebody who wants to do any kind of warehousing.
Hello, Amazon?
FedEx?
Yeah, I'm right, I'm right, right there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to change number three to remove the AD make piece.
Yeah.
All right? Streamline town government interactions with our existing businesses and institutions. Improve and streamline. This is important. Improve and streamline the, our town government interaction with existing businesses and institutions. There's some very hot, there's some very, you know, uh, high-level statements here. Review and streamline policies that affect global businesses, that's pretty general.
Well, we have that done already.
Pardon me?
That's already taken care of.
Yeah, sure. And then work with Toby Hospital, that, that was stir up a horn's nest.
Toby Hospital, they're down the drainages right now.
Just work to reinvigorate Wareham Village.
Right, yeah, take Toby Hospital out of that.
You know, Toby Hospital.
Why, why do they need to be involved to re, to reinvigorate the town?
They're doing whatever they want to do anyway. The maternity ward's gone away.
Well, keep, keep in mind that this section right here is about how this town works with existing businesses. And they're calling out, uh, one specific, very, very, very large specific business in, in Toby Hospital here. And for me, it seems relevant.
But strategy one, it goes back to your question about where is the small business? Strategy one in this, in this draft talks about how to deal with the small businesses.
So we need to expand this, I think. See, I, I, I'm with you, that, that, this is where George's comment needs to get a little more specific. I mean, I'm, that's about as general as you can be. Would you, you give me that look, Ken, it's just...
What are you talking about?
No, that's fine, if you want to be more specific about it. Small businesses as well as...
So...
Why can't that say work with existing businesses to reinvigorate Wareham Village?
Send them the cabbie.
So let me take an action, all right? To look at economic development, goal number two, strategy one, to, um, provide a little more color around, um, small business incubation. Uh, I, I, George, I got your message, and I, I got to think about how to say it. Is that okay?
Sure.
And I'll bring it back?
You know, one of the big things that I heard, and I'm sure other people heard it too, like when the Marriott got a, got a tax incentive. You know, you get everybody else in town slugging it out for years, what'd they get?
Right.
Where's that tax, where's that tax incentive?
There's no longevity incentive.
Yeah, yeah.
Stick around for ten years and there's a little something waiting for you for being a good neighbor.
So when we hear that some place is on a verge of closing down, then we go in and throw them a lifeline, is that what we?
I mean, you, you toss, you toss money, you toss money at people who come to town brand-new, but you turn your back on somebody who runs a business in town for twenty years.
One of the key things I heard from you, George, when you talked about small business, was is that the town didn't have a growth path for them. We had, we had the ability to say, okay, come here and, and rent this small, um, facility that you can get your business started with, and we'll help you do that maybe. But if you're successful and you start growing, we don't have the facility or the wherewithal to still keep you here. And I'm sure that as a business, um, as a businessman or a businessperson, that, um, future planning is going to be key. And if they look at the town and say, yeah, they're great to get going, but they can't, they can't maintain this, or...
If you brought a new business to town and you had a five- and ten-year plan, and you knew part of that five- and ten-year plan was there was someone, someplace to actually go as you grew.
Well, you talk about Charlotte Fitness Road, I mean, there's, there's an opportunity there. Really, those lots are being bought by small-area businesses and they're relocating over there. But that, that's, that's what?
Eight lots, maybe?
You know, how do you encourage that elsewhere?
Right, yeah, how do you bring it to a grander scale?
Maybe, maybe that's a good next-tier thing into the B-Dot. It's another roadway and another access for that type of activity.
Or, or, or it's, you keep talking about incentives rather than incentivizing a brand-new business to come into town exclusively. Incentivize a business that's making that leap from a thousand-square-foot contractor bay to the next step with expedited permitting, you know?
Yeah, 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 tax programs to let them, if we had the facilities for them to take advantage of.
Which lends itself back to the commercial, uh, the industrial parks.
Well, that was, that was the idea behind the change in the zoning bylaw for that nine-packing space benchmark. So an existing business could add on or expand without having to go through a full-blown site line process. Unfortunately, it's not working out that way.
Okay.
We need to revisit that.
So on strategy number two, though, um, how about if we do this? What if we said work with, we could replace Toby Hospital with all the, work with all Wareham Village businesses to reinvigorate, to reinvigorate it? Or we could say work with Toby Hospital and all, and all the, um...
Work with local stakeholders?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Why is that for neutrality?
Why is Toby Hospital being highlighted? What's their, what is their skin in the game to make the village a better place?
Twenty million invested in the, in the property.
But a hospital's a hospital. If I'm going to the hospital, quite frankly, I could care less what Wareham Village looks like. I'm going to the hospital because I got an issue.
It's like going to Verlai.
The man after my own heart.
They're going for their boss.
Good example is, uh, when you talk about Toby, Toby's part of the South Coast Hospital group. Go to St. Luke's Hospital in the area, all them big, old, classic old houses. They're all getting sucked up by, by St. Luke's Hospital. Every time they go there, there's another park on it or another hospital, another plaque on it.
That was just at Charlton, Charlton, and they're right downtown doing the same thing.
That's all, well, Charlton in Flow River?
Yeah.
Charlton, St. Luke's, and Toby are all same hospital.
Yeah.
Uh, like I said, the menturies, they're kicking them out of Wareham. And they've all said it's new benefit, because they're looking at it, it's not feasible. It's a business. Their bottom line is, their CEO, his guy, his job is to look at the pie chart and look at the profit margin, basically. If they're not making it, we're going to change it. That's the name of the game. You know, they don't give a shit about, hey, you're sick, fine, put them on a meat wagon and send them down the street. Helicopter flies over my house every day. Somebody's going someplace, right?
How about if we replaced Toby Hospital with, uh, Wareham Village businesses? All right?
Yeah, that way, Toby's included.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just not highlighted.
That, is that, is that diluting, uh, what you, what SIRPAD was trying to do there in your mind, Ken, or are we okay with that?
I, I think we're okay with it, it's not what SIRPAD intended, but I don't think that's necessarily what we wanted to do.
Yeah, I think it sends, that way sends a bad message to...
To everybody else.
Exactly.
Just to who's driving the bus.
Yeah. Same, same by striking make piece from the B-Dot.
I was just going to say that, right?
Yeah. Now you're not, you're not in bed with somebody, everybody's included.
Okay, good. All right. Service and facilities. Goal number one, support ongoing family-friendly initiatives. This is to act upon the two thousand seven police station feasibility study, which I think is going, underway, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So I think it's a good goal we keep. Then, I love this one. We can assign this one to the school committee, right?
They can't even name the school, don't even do that.
I know. It's, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a goal you can't argue with, but it, it's so generic. This one's done. What I would, what I would suggest is that we change this, not to say recertify, but, um, maintain. People good with that?
Yeah.
So I got to write this down, goal one. Uh, strategy three. Recertify. Change to maintain. Okay.
How do you do two?
Sorry?
How do you accomplish two?
Some generic statement.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's for whoever signs up to take on this one, they'll have to tell us.
That's a big one.
It's a huge one.
Yeah.
It's probably, it's probably the biggest one in there. This is to support efforts to create a new Wareham Community Center. It's going to be done in partnership with the Y, the Council, the COA, and the Boys and Girls Club. I didn't know that was an ongoing effort, to be honest with you.
Neither did I, I say it's the first I've heard of that. I mean, would any of these people listed be shocked to read that?
Well, here's the thing. Every, every time, every time I come across one like this, I say to myself, SIRPAD came up with this somewhere. And, and they came up with it from an existing document that had already talked to it. They came up with it from a workshop where people stood up and said, hey, we're trying to do this, and we want it reflected in the master plan. I mean, this came from somewhere, it's real. I just don't know...
How old is?
Or how old, or who sponsored it, or, do you know, do you happen to have any history on that?
It's still active, I mean, there's still discussion about the COA being part of the, uh, of the, of the Gleason Y.
It's a great goal, so I, I mean, leave it there.
Yeah, I'm just curious where it came from.
Okay. Here's another one of the more high-level generic statements. It says that we're going to support economic development in policies so we can fund local services and facilities that our people want. Which is like the mission of town government in general, right?
Everywhere.
Yeah. So here, they, they refer back to the economic development section, that's fine. And this one I got a major problem with.
Yeah.
Who snuck that in there? Was it you? No, it wasn't me.
Why, why would you want to do that?
This is, this is one that surprises me because I see some such high-level, unspecific statements in here at times. And then I see one here that is so crystal clear. And I, I get confused.
Well, it, it has the, the tone of someone's agenda.
Oh, it certainly does. Now, I don't have, I, I have a problem with it being written so clearly that yes, it's something that has to be done. I would be much more willing to leave that in there if it said, consider, instead of support.
I, I don't support any part of it.
Yeah, okay. Why, why would you support anything that its sole purpose is to raise the taxes on the citizens of the town that you're trying to serve?
Because...
The taxes in this town, I hate to break it to you.
No, you're not, you're speaking, you're preaching to the choir.
I, I moved from, I moved from the Cape, where everybody thinks the taxes are crazy. The taxes in this town are twice where I pay.
Holy cow. You think they're bad here.
But, but that's a political statement, that's not a...
Yeah, so my, my point is, is it goes back to what I said just a minute ago. People made a case for this to be in the master plan. I don't know who. Could have been one of our agencies, could have been the Boris Fleckman.
You know where it came from, probably, probably came from the old nineteen ninety-eight master plan. And it was, because what we did was, in one of the public sessions, was to give all the goals and, to the, the public and ask them to mark which ones they thought were appropriate to continue and to advance.
And you think this was one of them?
I think this was one of them.
So there you go. My point is, is that people have spoken. SIRPAD listened, said, there's people in this town that are interested enough in our master plan to come to these sessions and these, these workshops. And they told us loud and clear, this is what they want.
In the very beginning, when you started presenting this, we talked about two different meetings.
Two different?
Two different public meetings.
Yeah.
And a total of twenty people showed up at both of those meetings. That does not represent this town.
The vote in the ballot box is completely opposite of that.
I, I would suggest that if, if you, if you propose that at town meeting, if you get up on the stage and you propose that idea at town meeting, you'd better be wearing a flak jacket.
Well, I'm with you.
If you put, support new and innovative ways to accomplish goals without overriding pro two-and-a-half, I think you'd get a round of applause.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Don't beat up the messenger here, all right? Because I'm, I'm taking off my own personal opinion, because I hate that statement, all right? More so than probably everybody else here. But you say, talk about twenty people, that's fifteen more people than the five people in this planning board that are going to approve this plan. And, and they got to be heard. You can't, we...
Well, I mean, we're here discussing what we think are solid aspects of the plan and what, we, we've already modified or removed several parts of it. So if we're discussing that part of it, and we're discussing modifying and removing, my vote would be to remove it.
Yeah, you, you've been telling us for a while now that this is our plan, we take possession of it.
That's true.
To put that in, it looks like we endorse that statement.
Right, if someone wants to...
Oh, I don't want that statement, I think we need to modify it, trust me.
I mean, if you want to put a side note that there is some that feel that there should be pressure to, to do that in a, in a statement, but to make it a goal is...
Yeah, no, sure.
I would, I would want to change it to the, something that would be totally non-committal, something along the lines of, consider requests of, uh, certain factions of the Wareham population that want to consider a simple and accurate, uh, two-and-a-half override. You understand what I'm saying? But I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable just saying no and removing it.
I'm not.
Michael? I don't get a vote, I'm just, I'm going to shut up now, I've...
I don't get a vote either, but I'm not...
Yeah, I still have an opinion.
You explained the plan and being a very... You explained the plan and being a very high-level overview. And that is a very specific political statement.
I totally agree.
And I, I don't like it.
Yeah, I don't think it has any purpose in this.
So, I'm hearing we take it out.
Yeah. Now, now, the thing that concerns me is the Board of Selectmen in the process of reviewing the master plan now with their tweaks.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'll be interesting.
Interesting to see how they mesh.
What they, right.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're on another tangent. They're on definitely a different goal than we...
As George just said, I've, I've been waiting all night to throw this one out.
I know, I just picked up on it.
You know, we own it.
Right.
Well, we think we own it.
We know we own it.
The Board of Selectmen have given the approval of that.
No, 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 no. We own it. It's crystal clear. It's crystal clear we own it.
Okay.
And if the Board of Selectmen wanna make changes to it, they should come to us and present those changes that they want justified to us. They think they're gonna send over, you know, a bunch of notes written on the back of some toilet paper sheets that they, that they, that here's what we want done. It ain't gonna work that way.
How long you been in Wayham?
Hey, I've been here long enough to know how I don't wanna do it.
They can't even name the school. It's gonna be a riot over that.
Come on, that's good.
And, and you worry, you know.
We talked before about getting it perfect. And that we'll never get it perfect.
Well, no.
Right? I mean, I was of very strong opinion two months ago that we should approve it as is and at least, and at least get some traction and get going and have a process to, for people to come and try to change things they didn't like and then, and deal with it. But at least we'd have a, a plan that we can go on. But, um, I'm not concerned about approving this before or after the Board of Selectmen decide they come up with what they want done. And I'll be honest with you, they're gonna be, with all the stuff that Alan's, I know, written down and all the stuff I know Jim and Ace has written down, it's gonna take them a while to get that sorted down to, to something cohesive and, and intelligible.
So, and I don't know what they've written down. I, I think we have to remind ourselves that this is an overview.
Thank you, George.
And it, you can't get too specific. You can set goals and incent, and you're giving developers ammunition to come into this town and do things, whether you interpret it that way or not.
Okay, we got, um, where are we? Okay. Let's try to get through, hold on, let me just see where I am. Okay, we, we can get through three more in the next five minutes, okay? Um, create a long-term capital improvement program. I think that makes sense. It's, it's pretty high-level.
Now, are you talking municipal facility control?
Oh, which, are you on the number three or number four?
Yeah, your capital improvement plan, that's...
Town. That's town, right?
Yeah, it has to be town. Has to be.
Okay, so number four is pretty specific again. I think...
The reason for that is because there was a state program that was paying for...
And that's not around anymore, right?
No, I believe it is.
How about we change the word "establish" to "investigate"?
Explore.
How about explore ways to deal with solid ways?
Okay, services and facilities.
Because pay-as-you-throw is only one.
The way we do it now, is, is it limited to, is it limited to the way we're doing it now because of space constraints? As far as, when I go to the dump on Saturday mornings, which is one of my favorite things to do, by the way, it's like a social hour for me.
Wow.
Well, what can I say? I'm one of those strange people. The stuff I see going into those compactors blows my mind compared to coming from Barnstable, where they have, it, it's a large facility and you drive up to a series of bins. And you see people getting out of their car with, with bins. And one person will go over to the glass and dump their glass in, another one will walk over the cardboard. And people actually take part in it. They actually do it.
Well, you go to the transfer station, I take it in Rochester.
Yeah.
And, well, I don't go there anymore for whatever reason. Some people used to do that. Go there, they had, you know, the glass, the cans and this and that. You know, it almost caused a riot because the people backed up. Oh, why is that lady backing the rear parking lot? She's taking the cans out and doing this and that.
But again, is it because of space that we don't adopt something like that? Because it is a tight space.
I, I think it's also the market, too. I don't think you have a market for those items that specific anymore. Like, at one period of time, these trucks that would drive around neighborhoods doing recycle them, they dumped it all in the trash because there was no money in it.
Yeah.
You know, so that might be...
Why does Barnstable still do it? I mean, nothing's changed there.
I, I don't know. If they could all be going to the same place, they may have a waste stream that makes it pay for itself.
Yeah.
So, Bourne, look at Bourne. Bourne raises, you know, their landfill, their whole treatment area. Last I knew, they were doing like eleven million a year.
But the thing is, they're taking all the demolition from every place in the area. You know, it's, it's, what's gonna happen is if you squeeze it too hard, what they do is they're gonna do what they did before the older days, back up to a dirt road.
Right, and drop it. You find a couch on the side of the road.
I got a place on Beach Street. I had to get the neighbor to come out with his machine to take a stump out that was half the size of this table. Some guy dumped it. That got paid for landscaping some of these properties.
The, um...
All right, so, um, number four, I'm gonna change that to consider alternative solid waste programs.
That's, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Services and facilities, number three, augment local service through volunteer. And it says, "Refer to stewardship, the stewardship section," which is here and here's...
Already done my time.
Pardon me? Yeah. Here's where I'm gonna stop, all right? Uh, we'll, we'll pick it back up Thursday. Uh, we got, we got through a whole bunch. We, we did really good. Uh, the last thing I wanna say is, is that as we make these changes to these goals, we need to go into the text of, of the document and, and make sure that the text behind these, that, you know, underneath these goals lines up.
Reflexed.
So I'll do that. And, um...
Just a note on the housing one. It says, "The, uh, pursue tax title property for development of affordable housing."
You're back on page eight.
Uh, yeah. The town just sold a residential property for sixty-seven thousand dollars in onset. Tax title, tax auction.
Okay.
Does everything have to go to auction or is there a way for the Housing Authority or somebody to intercept that?
There is, there are.
Or rather than having some private party scoop up a bargain, private retain for the town?
Well, not so much retain it for the town, but to keep it up for them. You know, keep, get some credit for it. They say, I'm, not so much now, but I, real estate in Wayham traditionally has been lower than all the surrounding towns. Yet, this is where they come to do affordable. It's all that everybody else's problems are.
Okay. We're up to here, we'll stop. Uh, we need to go to executive session. Do we need to adjourn this meeting or something?
Uh, no, we just need a motion to go to the executive session for the purpose of, uh, I don't know what the number is for litigation. Is it eight?
That's what it says.
Anyway, it's to discuss the appeal of the Cedar Village, uh, denial and not return to open session.
So we close this all down? The, the video and everything?
Yeah, yeah, Bob will shut down. So, we would like to make that motion.
I thought you made the motion very well. I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, it requires a roll call vote. Uh, Mike?
Yeah.
Richard?
Do I get a vote on this one?
Yeah.
Uh, yes?
Mike?
Yes.
And yes, Mike, right. Good evening, Bob. Have a nice night.